All to order, the Seminole County School Board meeting for April 23rd, 2019. At this point in time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Reynolds, who will be introducing our invoker for this evening. Good evening, Dr. Reynolds.
Good evening, School Board members. Dr. Griffin, thank you for having us. We have a very special student to be the invoker for tonight's meeting. Alejandra Triplet Robinson is a junior at Lake Mary High School. She is very involved with our Young Women of Excellence. She is a student in our law program, our program of emphasis, and she's also quite an amazing dancer. She has been on our, performed on our step team and always at our talent show, and she is a dynamic young lady with a bright future, and so I would like to introduce to you Ms. Alejandra Triplet Robinson.
Hi, my name is Alejandra Triplet Robinson. Today, I'm here to give you a talk about the amazing Lake Mary High School. Honestly, I wouldn't want to go to another school. The staff and teachers are very caring and help kids who have aspiring dreams to get to where they need to succeed. I aspire to major in political science because I'm interested in being a politician, and in fact, I'm in interest into being a Congresswoman. I am currently in a program called Young, I'm currently in a program called Young Women of Excellence. This is a leadership class that helps minority females like me with big dreams, learn self-discipline, adapt to new environments, and learn how to speak to your audience, your addressing, your message to, and more. Being in this class is a great opportunity. I have visited many colleges through this program. For example, FSU, UNF, FAMU, BCU, and many more local Florida colleges. Even though the program, Young Women of Excellence, gave me many opportunities, I received lots of support from my principal, Dr. Reynolds, at Lake Mary High School. She arranged interviews and speaking engagements like the one I'm participating in with you. With the support of programs, considerate teachers, open-minded staff members, and helpful principal like the one I have, Lake Mary is the place to be. Please stand and join me in standing, in stating the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Hey, Alejandra. You go, girl. What a great job. Let the record reflect that all five School Board members are in attendance in addition to our legal counsel and superintendent. I do have a few people that would like to be recognized this evening. Sandra Maldonado-Ross, SCA President, welcome. Bobby Agonina with Lake Howell High School, Vice President of SCA, welcome Bobby. Judy Ning, Lake Howell High School, Seminole Education Association, and Polly DeLucia, Seminole County Council, PTAs and PTSAs. Thank you so much for joining us here this evening. Dr. Griffin, do we have any agenda modifications?
Just one, Madam Chair. The addendum for good cause is marked on our electronic agenda by a green flag named Addendum I.
Thank you. And School Board members, do you have any clarifying questions or items for removal? Separate consideration? Seeing none, I'll ask for an approval of the agenda outline.
The moved. Second?
There's a motion in the second. Any questions to discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Griffin, I think we have a few presentations this evening.
Yes, we do. Let's head down.
I am proud to recognize Kim Dove as this month's SCPS Veteran of the Month. Kim served in the United States Air Force from 1989 to 1992. After completing technical school at Chernobyl Air Force Base in Illinois, she spent the remainder of her enlistment stationed stateside at Kirkland Air Force Base in New Mexico. As a fabrication parachute specialist, Kim's main responsibility was to support the special operations parachutemen and combat control stationed at the base, duties including inspecting, packing, rigging, and storing parachutes. In addition to maintaining and recovering aerial delivery systems, she conducted routine inspections and leak tests on life support and safety equipment utilized by aircraft to include lifecrafts and life preservers and the like. After serving four years in the U.S. Air Force, Kim moved to Gainesville, Florida, and became a Gator, and has been in Florida ever since. After spending 16 years with the Florida Department of Health, she joined the district. She began as the district's environmental coordinator, served as assistant director, and is currently the Director of Facility Services. This past Veterans Day, the Facility Services team recognized and celebrated 25-plus Facility Service staff who served in the Armed Forces. Kim's team prepared a slideshow of boot camp photos. You can see Kim's there. A Millennium Middle School student sang the National Anthem, Winter Springs Color Guard, presented the colors, and recited the Pledge of Allegiance. It was a great opportunity for the department and to make, to line up with the students while honoring those who served. Thank you, Kim, for your service, and congratulations on being Veteran of the Month.
Dr. Griffin and Board members, I have the privilege of recognizing two outstanding Seminole County student athletes tonight. First, from Seminole High School, congratulate, I'm sorry, we're going to go first from Oviedo High School congratulates to our state champion, girls weightlifter Alexis Jones. Alexis Jones is a junior at Oviedo High School. She joined the weightlifting team as a 10th grader to try something new. Last year as a 10th grader, she qualified for state and ended up placing second overall in her weight class. This year, Alexis has dominated her competition. She took first place in both the district and regional meets on her way to state. At state, she broke the unlimited weight class bench press record as she benched 305 pounds in her final attempt. She ended up having a total combined weight of 515 pounds and won the individual state weightlifting championship for the unlimited weight class. Congratulations, state champion Alexis Jones. With her this evening, her coach Danny Evans and Principal of Oviedo High School, Mr. Joe Tribas. Our next student athlete, congratulations from Seminole High School, state champion wrestler, Curtis Ruff. Curtis is an 11th grader. He recorded 48 wins in one season and set the school record with his record of 48 and one. Listen to this, in 2017, he finished in third place in the state, and 2018, he finished in second place in the state. So of course, what happened in 2019? First place state champion. He had a school record 37 pins and was just voted to the Seminole, all Seminole Athletic Conference team, takes AP and honors classes. With him today, two outstanding people, one from Seminole High School, athletic director, Coach Mike Kent and his mom, mom raise your hand back there, LaShara Brown, proud mom.
Dr. Griffin and Board members, I'd like to introduce the new principal of Keith Elementary, Joanne Crampath. Please come up, Joanne. Joanne has been with Seminole County Public Schools for the past 20 years. Her career began at Goldsboro Elementary School. She then moved on to Millennium Middle School where she worked with Dr. Griffin. She taught math and then became the Dean of Discipline. Most recently, she served as the Assistant Principal at Layer Elementary School and Bearlake Elementary. During that time, she also served as an adjunct professor in the Mathematics Department at Seminole State College. Joanne received her bachelor's degree in elementary education and middle grades mathematics and a master's degree in educational leadership from Nova Southeastern University. With her tonight is her husband Bob, please stand, her son Nick, and his wife Catherine. And is Matt here? Son Matt, is Matt here? Is Matt here? They're celebrating with her tonight, and her daughter Angela lives in Arizona and is with us via Facebook.
Good evening, Superintendent Griffin and School Board members. Tonight, we wish to recognize the graduating class of our 2018-2019 SCPS Community Leadership Academy. This is just our third class since creating this unique program to give our residents and business community a firsthand behind-the-scenes look into the inner workings of our A-rated school district. As I call out the names of the members who are in attendance, please come to the front to receive a special token of our appreciation. All right, first we have Richard Ali. Malgrisada Berger. Lindsay Byer. Linda Corless. Helen Foo. Everybody knows this one, but Christine Kraus, you can stay there. Lydia Lawrence. Kenneth Lundey. Scott Macioni. John Mackin. Natalie Mullitt. Sarah Pape. Karen Fannerstill. Jeanette Renoso. Lisa Rivieri. Lori Shonek. Dan Coleman. Stephanie McFarlane. Nikki Voiles. And Stephanie Huff. Thank you for all our members who are able to participate this evening. Just stay up here, we're going to take a quick group photo, okay?
Thank you. You guys are going to miss the most important part of the meeting. And now, we're ready for our focused on student achievement. Dr. Walsh, welcome.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, Board members. Dr. Griffin, thank you for this opportunity for us to share with you the updated information. As you know, we're coming on a year of implementation of our mental health plan, and really, it's become a national, an international, state, and district focus. And so, we've received a lot of support as well as a lot of information over the course of the year. One of the things that we have been clear about is that mental health is, is something that we need to make sure and ensure that our students are receiving treatment and treating the whole student, not just educationally, but the well-rounded student as well. Many of our students receive, about 70% of our students have experienced some type of physical or emotional trauma, and that is the adverse childhood experience, ACES. This is a national study that is done, and usually, it starts and manifests itself in childhood, and if it's not addressed, it becomes an epidemic or an issue for a student as an adult. So we want to hit and nip it in the bud. Another thing that we have learned is the majority of mental illness emerges in childhood, yet fewer than 50% of those students are treated. So it's vital that we kind of identify these early on, welcome and work with the students. One of the other things that we have learned over the course of the year and prior to this as well, as we've heard some national epidemics, but the second leading cause of death for students and adults ages 10 to 34 is suicide. So with that, we have to focus in on mental health early on in schools. Now, February 14th, 2018, it was brought to our attention and national attention when at Marjorie Stoneman Douglas, 17 students and staff members were killed and 17 others were injured. What manifested after that, and what happened after that, was laws going into place and allocations for school districts to put mental health in the forefront. So with that, we received funds to go ahead and hire mental health counselors and put a plan in place. Thanks to all of you allowing us to advertise it early on, we were able to get 13 mental health, licensed mental health certified individuals to help our students, and we were the first in central Florida to do so, so I want to thank you publicly for that. I also want to share with you some of the things that we put into place. We do have a program specialist because it is scaffolded and we have a tiered approach to serving our students. Keeping in mind that 13 individuals cannot do it alone, we have guidance, or certified counselors at schools, 130 of those, we have social workers, we have school psychologists, and we have district mental health counselors to provide services. So it is scaffolded for the needs of our students. Each school is assigned a district mental health counselor, and we put into place that tiered three approach. Now, we've been very good with tier one and tier two, but that tier three really needed some fine tuning, and over the course of the year with input from everyone, and most recently at your work session, we received Student Voice, and thank you very much for that opportunity as well, that we will be able to update our district mental health plan, bringing it to you to get approval because it needs to be approved every single year. So that Student Voice is going to be added into our plan, and I thank you very much for that opportunity. We also have some deliverables, and so we had those lists, and what I'm reading as far as updates that are coming from legislators and Senate Bill and the House Bill sides are basically the same. There's going to be more sanctions and more informations that are, information that we're requiring us to report back with these dollars that are coming our way for mental health. So what I'm proud about is what has been done, and so Ashley, our program specialist is going to fill you in on where we are, the state of the union on mental health in our district at this point.
Awesome, thank you so much. Good evening. So I wanted to update you on what we've been able to do this year so far. So when we started working with students, we realized that we really needed to categorize them into three categories, so we determined that there's students that we do check-ins with. Those are students that have an outside provider, but we want to make sure that they're maintaining, that they're seeing their outside provider, that there's no hiccups in the road where they don't have insurance, where they're not being scheduled, where their parents can't make it. So those students we check in with. Once a month for about 10 to 15 minutes, we call their outside providers when we have releases of information, we connect with the parents, and we make sure that they're still getting supports. And we have about 145 students that we are supporting currently for check-ins. Then we have what we consider school mental health supports. So even though they have an outside provider, they may need something additionally. We're still seeing an impact. So we see them anywhere from one to four times a month for 30 to 60 minutes, but we're also talking to their outside provider, so they have outside support and in-school supports to make sure that they're getting their needs met everywhere. And then we have students that are active cases, and we have 351 of those currently. Those are students that can't access outside services for whatever reason, whether it be insurance, transportation, parents are just unable with their schedule to get them to services, so we become the primary provider on those cases. Our district mental health counselors also assist with suicide risk assessments on campuses. Our certified school counselors and our social workers are kind of the first line of defense, but if a student needs a further risk assessment before we involve law enforcement, they participate in that, and they have done 296 of those this year. We also have 263 referrals and process, so those are ones that maybe we've referred for an outside provider, but we're keeping them on our radar, or we haven't been able to engage the parents yet, and we're trying things like email, stopping them in the car pickup line, just really trying to let parents know about our services. And so, further when we look at what we're doing as Seminole County Public Schools, is we've identified, like Dr. Walsh mentioned, that tiered approach. We have some founding principles that we determined to be very important for Seminole County Public Schools, and that is a commitment to evidence-based practice, focusing our conditions for learning, collaboration with our families, our schools, and our community. So one way that we've done that this year is we had our Mental Health and School Safety Summit at Lyman High School, which we had a panel of experts in school safety and mental health available for parents to come and see and speak to and ask questions. We also did a mental health and behavior support parent engagement workshop recently in the Sanford community, and we just have a commitment to safe and healthy learning environments throughout the district. Then for all students, we want to make sure that we have that social, emotional learning piece. Seminole County Public Schools has identified a preferred curriculum at the elementary, middle, and high school level, and we have that available to all campuses, along with a teacher on assignment for social and emotional learning that can help them support the implementation. We're working on reducing the stigma of mental health while also having trauma-informed, culturally-sensitive practices and promoting self-care of our staff so they can help take care of our students. Then some students we realize may need additional supports. This is when our school social workers come in, they can make referrals to community mental health agencies, do some individual and group interventions, and do some early identification and referrals. Our tier three, and those are the students that have the most intensive mental health needs. They may be having frequent inpatient admissions, they may need that additional support for reentry planning as they come back from a hospital stay, they may need to be referred to some of our more intensive community supports like the CAT Team or Wraparound Seminole. So those students are where the district mental health counselors are mostly supporting the schools, those tier three students that have those additional needs. Seminole County Public Schools has also done a lot towards the youth mental health first aid. So far this year, we've done 14 trainings. We've trained pretty much all of our threat assessments, and we have a few, five more trainings scheduled for the end of May and beginning of June to get all of our threat assessment teams on each campus trained, and then we're going to be doing 10 additional trainings this summer through Power of You to get all of our teacher-based employees trained that are, training that is available, and then we're working with the Florida DOE to work on our Cognito training, which is an online webinar that provides more, more information on mental health. One of the big things that Seminole County Public Schools did this year while the DOE was preparing more formalized online trainings is that we had all of our schools go ahead and do a two-hour webinar on suicide awareness and prevention. So every single staff member at a school that comes in contact with a student has had that two-hour training, and we're really proud of that for our district.
Any comment?
Yes, Ms. Almond.
I just want to say that I really appreciate the value that you put on self-care for staff because it's so important. You get overburdened with, you know, not-so-great information sometimes, so thank you for that.
And yes, kudos to you for putting this PowerPoint together. Is there a way we can get a copy of it? You have it?
Yes, we can get that copy. And what wasn't mentioned, and I think it'd be important for everyone to know, that our board and superintendent and the cabinet led by example, and all have been through the six-hour youth mental health first aid training, and Dr. Griffin has done follow-up with our cabinet because he wanted to dive deeper into understanding mental illness and all the triggers and those kinds of things that at Cabinet, we have updates by various district mental health counselors.
Thank you. I'd just like to add that I'm so encouraged that you added the student component because that's who we really need to be listening to. Thank you.
Are, are we working on the tier three and getting maybe access to some of the community partners that do telemed with, with mental health for those students that can't access it for transportation issues?
We are looking at different vendors. We had put out an RFP for vendors because that's the process that we need to follow. When we first put out our RFP, we did not have enough response, and also, everything, the infrastructure wasn't necessarily in place at the time that we put it out. But it is on our radar to go ahead and look at that again, because what we have found is that we have far greater need than we do resources available to our students.
I can give a little bit of an update. So we have about 13 agencies right now that are community mental health providers that we have agency access agreements with, and one of our biggest local providers that does do the tele, mental health counseling and telepsychiatry is Empower, so they are one of our access agreement partners, so we are able to refer students to them. It's just sometimes you have insurance limitations on if they'll accept that telehealth. Also, Aspire Health Partners does telepsychiatry, so we also partner with them to get students seen in the Seminole County office or telepsychiatry.
Thank you.
Thank you both and to your entire team for your leadership in this. I know the entire state is constantly looking to you and plagiarizing off of the documents that we've all collaboratively worked on, but there's nothing more important when we talk about student health and safety. That is very critical importance. We talk about hardening the schools, but really, we know that softening the schools by having those better and stronger relationships in the end will be better for all involved, so thank you for your great work. Yay, Board members. Ooh, I heard clapping, yes. They have done great. Dr. Griffin, do you have a recommendation for the consent agenda, please?
Aye, do you, Madam Chair? My recommendation is that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
The moved. Second?
There's a motion in the second. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to student discipline hearing dispositions, please.
My recommendation is that the School Board of Seminole County approve the student disciplinary recommendations from March 25th, 2019, April 1st, 2019, and April 9th, 2019.
The moved. Second?
Motion in the second. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Now, we have reached our public comment segment of our meeting. Ms. Almond, if you could please share with our audience our policies.
The public input segment of the meeting is provided for the purpose of permitting persons to present specific matters to the Board for its consideration and action or referral to the superintendent and his or her staff for inquiry and action as appropriate. The public input segment of the meeting is not open to presentations of campaign issues by political candidates, matters involving student disciplinary actions, pending employee disciplinary matters, or pending litigation. Each speaker will have one opportunity to address the Board, and it will be limited to three minutes, and they must clearly identify the matter to be addressed on the speaker's signup form. No speaker may yield his or her time to another person. If multiple members of a group wish to address the Board on the same issue, the Board may request the group to select one representative to present comment to the Board on behalf of the members concerning the relevant issue, and that designated representative will have six minutes to speak. Thank you.
Mrs. Almond, I have one request to address the Board from Mr. David Marini, please. Mrs. Almond, I have one request to address the board from Mr. David Marini, please. Welcome.
Okay, yep. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the school. Okay. Members of the School Board, Superintendent, Legal Counsel, that always seems to get ignored.
That was sweet of you.
About a month ago, I asked this board to look into. About a month ago, I asked this board to look into implementing a mandatory financial class for high school students, and I've just came to check in to once again remind you and this time to ask to look into the board endorsing Florida Senate Bill one-one-four. Citing one of the previous reasons for my request, a study conducted, excuse me, but the National Capability Study, a part of FINRA, showed that the percentage of Americans who can pass a basic financial literacy test fell from forty-two percent in two thousand and nine to just thirty-seven percent as of two thousand and sixteen. This sharp decrease is a sign of impending doom for our economy, a fate which, if we were educated on, could be prevented. As such, I am asking the School Board of Seminole County to endorse Florida Senate Bill one-one-four, which would make an independent financial literacy class a requirement for graduation. Thank you for your time and have a great day.
Thank you, David, for coming back to visit. We appreciate you so much. We have a lot of bills going through Tallahassee, fast and furious. I'm sure we'll talk about more of that later in our meeting. Dr. Griffin, any unfinished business?
I do have one item this evening. My recommendation is that the School Board of Seminole County approve the External Operator Contract with Learning Sciences, FLE zero-five-nine LLC.
The moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Griffin, any new business or anything on your superintendent's report?
There's no new business, and all three items are read-only items in my report.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to board member comments. First up is Member Kraus, please.
Thank you. We all participated in a student mental health summit here at the ESC building, and I am just so impressed with these student leaders and so glad that they will have a voice and input into some of the policies that we hope to implement. As Dr. Calderon expressed, the state is looking to us and some of our programs to emulate throughout the state, so I think that speaks volumes. We attended so many schools, so I'm just going to do a couple. Lake Howl is my home school, and I've been there several times. I went to their, my first-ever pep rally at Lake Howl, and I couldn't hear afterwards, but it was hilarious. It was so much fun. They have been awarded the most spirited student body, and I think rightfully so. I was also attended, they have a weekly culinary competition with their Level Four students, and the food was phenomenal, and I shouldn't have eaten anything that whole morning before I went because it was just outstanding. They have a bright future, those students. I went with Dr. Walsh, and we toured some jet sites, which are workplaces for some of our students. They spend half a day in school and then half a day on the job training, and they're phenomenal opportunities. Two of the students had a chance to, they were getting ready for interviews that day, and so they were a little nervous, and then having us show up too was a little intimidating. But they are, they have a bright future ahead, and I'm so grateful for this program. I also toured Bentley Elementary. My dear friend Karen Heinrichs works there, and she invited me. And they have a phenomenal staff and student body, and I was very welcome. And I won't go into any more. I'll share some for the others. Thank you.
First, Chairman Almond, please.
Thank you. So Caspery Chamber, the Business Luncheon, had the Seminole State College Business Incubator that they talked about, and that was a great presentation. They also, that same evening, had a scholarship reception for students from Lake Howl, Lyman, and Winter Springs High School. Seven scholarships were given out. It was really a nice affair. They also, Caspery Chamber leads a very friendly kickball competition periodically, and the money's raised goes to the food pantry at Caspery Elementary. So they constantly support that particular food pantry. I'm in agreement with Christine on the Mental Health Summit. I was so impressed with the maturity and the honesty that these students exhibited. National Speaker Tadar Mohammed spoke at the Leadership Seminole Summit, and then we invited him to speak to the students at Journeys, and he shared some of his experiences and not-so-wise choices as a youth with the students there to hopefully teach them to learn from what his mistakes had been. And he's a very, he's a really great guy. Appreciate him coming out. We attended the fiftieth annual Math Awards High School Competition at Seminole State College. Talk about smart kids. Unbelievable, and thank you to Seminole State for always hosting that competition. Insurance and Wellness Committee met, and we'll be having a work session with them coming up. I did not share information since we'll all be discussing and voting on it. I usually do the Oviedo capstone projects, and all of you probably do as well. You haven't lived until you've done the AP capstone at Seminole High.
Yes.
Absolutely will blow you out of the water how brilliant these young people are. They reminded me of college professors. They're really at a different level. The two last things, SASSA Awards, our Seminole Association of School Administrators. Thank you to that organization for the many student scholarships for employees, children, and for also recognizing so many outstanding administrators. And then lastly, the Children's Cabinet has, it's hard to see this, but it's a sticker that you can put in your car window if you feel the need. It says, "Look before you lock. Never leave a child in a car alone." And some people do get distracted and busy. So these are provided by the Florida Department of Children and Families, and it's myflfamilies.com if anyone is interested. Thank you.
Great idea. Member Pennick, please.
Oh, thank you. Lots of school visits, like everybody else. We've been really busy. The one that stands out to me is Rock Lake. Last week, we went and did garden seeding. Orlando City Foundation is partnering up with some of our schools to provide in-house gardens. So for any of our schools that are interested, go to their foundation page and apply. They are looking to add it in as many schools as possible as a community project. The SCCPTA Awards Banquet last week, where we introduced the new leadership. We attended the Lion King Presentation of Altamont Springs Elementary last week. The Idlewild Future Ready Academy. Last week, I took a trip to Tallahassee where I got to meet with some of the legislators to remind them of Seminole County and to focus on our budget question there to keep vocation moving forward in our HVAC project. We're coming upon graduation season, and today we got to attend the Young Men and Women of Excellence Graduation. What a phenomenal program that went from, how many graduates? Twenty-five graduates to one hundred and fifteen this year? Amazing what you guys do for those kids to have great futures. I think one of the neatest things, and I have some Crystal Lake Moms in the room, is Crystal Lake started twenty years ago, just shy of twenty, nineteen, eighteen, nineteen years ago. We will be graduating our first graduates who attended Crystal Lake the first time when they opened. So I think that that's really exciting to see them walk across the stage from little babies all the way to graduates. And congratulations to all the upcoming graduates. We wish you the best success. We're always here for you. Come back and work for us.
Amen. Member Sanchez, please.
Well, we've had a very busy month. I had an opportunity to go to our Lake Brantley High School SAC, PTASA, or PTA Cluster Meeting, and we had, I had to leave a little early with Dr. Daniels, but I was able to receive the reports from everybody and the feedback, and it went really well. So thank you for everybody that participated in that. AP Senior Awards Night, Art Night at Seminole State College, Mary Lane. Kudos to you and your group for doing an outstanding job with that. Our Business Advisory Board, right now, we are still currently doing our deep dive on school start time. I had the opportunity to see Hairspray at Lake Brantley High School in their new auditorium, which looks absolutely phenomenal. So if you haven't had a chance to go over there and there's a play or anything else, or, you know, we have a jazz concert this weekend, but that's going to be a different facility, right? Yes, it's at a CA. Okay. I didn't know if it was changed to somewhere else. Many of us had the opportunity to go to Altamont Elementary School to see the Lion King. They did a fabulous job. Kudos to them. We love to be invited to the schools to go to the functions. So if you know anybody that wants us to come read into the classrooms or do anything, please let us know because we like to be there. We had a great tour of English Estates and their garden. And kudos to Marie Spoon for being our PE teacher and the garden club leader and how much time she dedicates to the garden. And we had an opportunity to buy and purchase our own garden foods and things like that, or vegetables. And then the following day, I had a chance to read and help actually a fifth-grade class at center. So I like to be in the classrooms to do that, and we had fun doing that. And with Administration Day tomorrow, I'll be answering the phones at Indian Trails Middle School so the secretaries can enjoy lunch. Also, to Hagerty High School, thank you to Colonel Wimbish for putting together JROTC Award Ceremony and Change of Guards. That was phenomenal. We had a great attendance there, and they did a remarkable job. Battle of the Book Awards, we all went to that. And Sanford won for the second year in a row, Sanford Middle School. So I guess it will be there again next year, correct? Boy, do we have some smart kids that read a lot, and reading, reading, reading. So especially with literacy, I'm sure you'll talk about that. And I also want to just make sure that you're, there's only nine days left in the session. And I really need everybody, we all really need everybody to pay attention to House Bill seventy-thirty, I'm sorry, Senate Bill seventy-thirty. We desperately need funding for our public schools and some of the other bills. So please write to your legislators, call them, and do what you need to do to help our public schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And believe it or not, there's a few other things we haven't talked about yet tonight. The first-ever Rube Goldberg event was amazing. I could have spent all day there, couldn't we have? The kids were so creative, and each year they come up with a creative question, and then they have to create a mechanism to do it. And so this year was how to turn a page in a book. And to me, I was thinking, how boring is that? But these were exciting. Some of the kids picked their favorite books, and they made a whole diorama out of it and liked the mousetrap games when we were younger, having the things go. It was phenomenal. I highly recommend attending it next year. The Millennium Middle School Band was actually invited to perform at Dr. Phillips Center from UCF, and I felt like I was in Carnegie Hall. It was so neat. They were the only middle school there with all these other high school orchestras, and I thought they were the best, not that I'm prejudiced or anything. And had the opportunity to represent this board on the Scholarships Committee for the foundation and read hundreds and hundreds of great applications. I wish we only had more money to give scholarships to every student that applied, but it shows us how great our kids are in owning their future and trying to go for these scholarships because they know their futures will be bright. As far as the zoo, we had our biggest fundraiser this last weekend, Brew's Around the Zoo, so we're hopeful a lot of money was raised there to be able to support our vet program that we have with Sanford Middle School there, and then also our support of the Health Academy with Seminole High School. And our internship expo, thank you, thank you to all the businesses that came out. It was our largest ever. No parking was available. But I think we have to find another way to even invite more businesses because we had so many more students that were in their suits with their resumes, ready to get to work. But I think the businesses would be very, very pleased to see the caliber of the workforce that we're putting out. And I think it speaks volumes to see so many businesses that have been there since the beginning of time. So if they keep coming back year after year, obviously, they're getting a good work product from our students. So I was very proud of them. Also had the opportunity to speak with South Seminole Middle School Girls with Women in Government Day. It was exciting to see so many women wanting to go in potentially into the field of politics and government, just as our invoker here this evening. So I'm encouraged with that, and hopefully, I know all five of us can be role models in that endeavor. I wanted to thank the Oviedo Women's Club, who gave tens of thousands of dollars in scholarships to our students and classroom grants to our teachers. I know when you go to a day in the country in Oviedo each year, all of those proceeds go back to the community with those programs. And in one quick night, they give out all of those scholarship awards. So they're a phenomenal partner for Seminole County Schools, and we appreciate them so much. There was great news just a few minutes ago. As you know, I sit on the Orlando Science Center Board, and we just were awarded a ten-million-dollar grant from the TDC in Orange County. So that will really help expand our quality science education through the Orlando Science Center. So good things to come out of that. And to piggyback on what Ms. Sanchez said, we have a few more days of our legislature working very, very hard in Tallahassee, and I wanted to publicly thank Representative Smith and Senator Simmons for supporting our House Bill twenty-one-eleven, and that's to expand our vocational programs here in Seminole County. That is a very important funding light item for us here in Seminole County Public Schools. So any support that we could give for that, and to thank our representatives, we need to continually be in open dialogue, to collaborate, to make sure that we're focused on quality public school education. So anything else for the cause, Dr. Griffin? Anything else, ladies? Yes, Ms. Sanchez?
Just wanted to thank our Supervisor of Elections, who, when we went to the girls' government class over at South Seminole, he gave us a ton of flags and the Supervisor of Elections pamphlets to pass out to all the students. So thank you, Christopher Anderson, for doing that. And I think that was it. There was something else, but I forgot. Oh, E-Pathways, with you mentioning about the expo internship and the vocational programs. Jason Weisong, who, and your team, who did a great job with it. We've been working on trying to get our large fleet over at our bus depot, and it's working. So we're going to get interns. At first, we thought we were going to have two. Now it looks like we have six. So for our diesel vocational program for our large fleet and our buses, it looks like we're going to have a great internship for the summer for them.
Seeing nothing else to come before this board, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you, ladies.